All right, good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, May 21st Rockport Public Schools School Committee meeting. And I, Mark Branco, Superintendent of Schools, once a year get to call the meeting to order and hold the gavel, so I feel very privileged, so you're gonna have to take it away from me shortly. So we will call the meeting to order. So first of all, I'd like to welcome Tammy Titlebaum to the school committee, so congratulations on joining us on the team. No idea what you signed up for. We're happy to have you. Do you mind, so just press that button on the mic, and if you don't mind giving like a two-second commercial, just letting people know who you are and...
Tammy Titlebaum, I am a nutritionist. I work in schools in Newburyport. I've been doing that for three years, and I'm a mom here in Rockport. My daughter's in first grade, and I'm happy to be here and on this team with these lovely folks.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Great to have you.
You're welcome.
So this is the first meeting of the new cycle, so we have some order of business to do publicly first. So the first thing we have to do is we do what's called a reorganization, where we'll have to elect a chairperson and then a vice-chairperson, and we have some business to review, and then we'll have some preliminary discussions around school committee subcommittees, and then we'll move on to the more typical order of business. So at this point in time, I will entertain a motion for someone to nominate a chairperson.
I would like to nominate Amy Oakes for chairperson of the school committee.
Second?
Any conversation, discussion?
I'd just like to say I'm all for it.
That's coming. All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, congratulations, Madam Chair. I lose that instantly.
All right, our next...
Thank you all for your vote of confidence, and I'll expect everybody to pitch in and help. And our next order of business is to elect a vice-chair. Do I have a nomination?
Amy, I'd like to nominate Nicole Tierry.
Second?
Any discussion? Are you willing? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Our next order of business is to review guidelines from the state around open meetings and executive session. This information is given to us and it applies to every school committee in the state, and we work hard to follow these guidelines. If you go through these slides, if you advance the slide to the next one, we also always want to review our telephone and email correspondence policies. I would ask you to read through these if you have any questions at all. I think the best person to ask is the superintendent. Any questions at all about open meetings also, I think you can ask the superintendent as well. It's just important that we remember these policies and that certainly we follow the open meeting laws of the state of Massachusetts. The role of the school committee, I think, is super important, and surely we've heard this before. We have three primary responsibilities on this committee. The first is to set and maintain policy for our school system, and of course, we've done a huge amount of work this past two years. We've just reviewed all of our school district policies, and at our last meeting, we approved them. The second one is to oversee and approve the annual budget for the school district and act as the employer for collective bargaining. You know that we've just completed collective bargaining over our past two years, and certainly we've all been part of the budget development process. That is complete for this year, thank goodness. And then finally, our last job is to hire the superintendent to run the school district and to annually evaluate the superintendent's performance. Again, we've just completed that work. And then I think the last thing I would say, I always think of Michael Kelly and how really clear and thoughtful he was about reminding all of us that as school committee members, one of our important tasks is to remember that we speak for the one group that really doesn't have a form of voice in the system. They are people we must absolutely always be thinking about in this work, and that, of course, is our students. So it's not to say we don't support the entire staff, but we have a responsibility to speak up for students. Okay? Any thoughts, comments, questions? All okay? All right. I think that brings us to a preliminary discussion of our subcommittees. I think some years, these are very busy, other years, maybe not so much. Tonight, let's just make sure we know what these committees do, and then we'll come back at our next meeting, and we'll have a proposal to assign ourselves to them. Budget, you know, I'm not sure, I feel like we have a big budget subcommittee because it comes out of your office and you bring it to us as a group.
So traditionally in this district, because of the size of the district, and because we only have five school committee members, we don't have a budget subcommittee. We have always preferred to do that as one entity, so I believe we would like to continue that.
Our policy subcommittee, as I said, has been very active these past two years. Currently, all of our policies will be updated, and they'll be housed on the MAS C website, Massachusetts Association of School Committees. But still, we'll need a policy subcommittee because they will bring to us any policies that need to be updated on a regular basis. Negotiations, we don't have negotiations scheduled for this year, nevertheless, we will need a negotiation subcommittee in case something were to come up. A wellness committee, Nicole, you've been a representative on the wellness committee, and so we'll want to make sure we continue to have somebody. Communications, that is a result of our work as a school committee to advocate and speak up for our school district, and so I think we probably agree it's important for that to continue. A liaison to the select board, and I think it's important to realize, I don't think that means that you go to every single select board meeting. I think that means that you're interested in the select board, and if we needed to send somebody over, you'd be willing to do that. Same for Board of Health, and then same for a liaison to the finance committee. So I think if you think about what interests you, I think if you just wanted to send me something if you're interested in a subcommittee, that would be great, and we'll sort of come back and talk about it when we're together again in two weeks. So I think that that concludes number two, okay? We're going to do one or two things, they have things to do tonight. The next order of business is to approve the minutes from May 7th. They've been in the Google Drive. Four of us were at that meeting, and so I just want to be sure you've had a chance to review the minutes. Okay, could I have a motion to approve the minutes from May 7th?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right. Do we have any public comment tonight? All right. Now I would entertain a motion to move item eight, Share the Success, and item 11, our four presentations up right now, and then to let the rest of the meeting come after that. So I need a motion to shift the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so that brings us to item eight on the agenda, which is Share the Success. Lawson, you're here tonight to share some success and tell us what's going on with students. Go right ahead, press that little button.
Yeah, I just wanted to give a little, like, some good news about how the end of the year is going. So I am graduating next week, and with being a graduating senior, it's a fun time at the end of the year, because I've been attending a lot of my friends' events of their, like, last, like, for instance, I went to the final drama production for my friends who have been doing the drama program throughout all years of high school. Literally, some of them have not missed a single, like, performance, and that's really special. I've gone to some of my friends' last sports games, of which, like, they compete every year, like, every semester in a sport, or every sports season for all the four years of high school. Been to some track meets, been to some baseball games. And then, of course, prom just happened. That was very successful. It was fun, everyone looked so beautiful, and it was a good time, and it's just a very nostalgic time. Just yesterday, we had our internship fair, so the seniors, it was the majority of the grade, only a few students could not fit it in their schedule, so everybody pretty much had an internship. And so we did that fair yesterday in the gym, and it was fun to have the other high school students come around, they entered the gym, and visited everyone's tables, and everyone had presentations, and I went around and looked at some of my classmates' presentations, and they were all very professional. Everyone had such interesting internship experiences, and they were all internships that the students looked for themselves, you know? Nobody handed them to them. It all kind of came from their own personal interests. So that was super special to see. Then also yesterday evening, I performed in the senior showcase as well as my friends. That's another example of the last performance that me and my friends in the music department will have at the Shailan Liu Performing Arts Center. And some of my friends have been, I mean, I've been performing there since middle school, as well as my other friends, so it's been super special. I didn't even, I personally didn't do a small ensemble this year, so I didn't even get to perform there much throughout high school, but my friends who did that throughout years of high school, it's crazy to think that that was their last performance there, as well as our last orchestra performance. So it's just been wrapping up nicely, kind of sad, and we all end up crying, but it's such good memories. And then, speaking of, like, athletic ceremonies, those have been happening for softball and baseball, people getting awards. Senior week is next week, so we're gonna have some final get-togethers for the senior class, really, like, wrap things up. Senior graduation rehearsals start next week. And also graduating, the eighth grade, so we have been doing the, the eighth grade recognition night will be happening. Also, the eighth grade is currently in Washington DC right now. They've been having a good time, so they are also moving on to better things. The eighth grade recognition night, by the way, is on June 11th. So those are some fun field trips. Also, the sixth gr, the incoming sixth grade, welcoming new people and new students into the middle school, that is happening June 3rd to, like, the preparing to welcome the sixth grade, it's kind of like a parent event, so the parents come in and tour the school, so that's happening soon. So yeah, saying goodbye to some students, welcoming new students, it's all fun things. And then also to kind of end up leading into the internship stuff. We're doing a, part of my internship was, I'm working on mentorship, separate thing, but there's gonna be an end-of-year combined high schooler and middle schooler assembly that's gonna be happening on May 27th, and it's like an outside, sort of like ice cream social sort of deal, but we're basically getting all the kids outside to kind of all hang out with each other and have kind of an end-of-year, like, fun event. So that should be fun, it kind of represents just the lighthearted, like, end-of-year nostalgic stuff that's gonna be happening, so that's gonna be exciting. And also, in regards to the student representative chair for the student advisory committee, we are having elections for that soon. I don't think I will be a part of it because I will be, have been graduated at that point, but Henry Park, who's usually sitting here, he's been doing a great job in managing the student group, so I think he's planning elections, so that should be happening soon. But that's pretty much it, it's been a fun end of the year.
So as you can tell, it's literally all downhill at this point. So that's actually impressive that you did it, because I actually had to print the calendar off the website just to make sure, and I think you hit almost every single major event, so well done. Big shout-out to Darlene Trembor, Erin Kniff, and Phil Whitley for putting together another fantastic motif number-one race and event, and not to mention all of the other volunteers, staff members, and community members who support that event. And I do believe that our chorus program and Mr. Smoker performed the following evening Sunday as part of that. So thank you to all the community members and staff members who kind of make this unique iconic event come true every year. And I think other than that, the only other couple of things I was looking at is, you know, believe it or not, we actually have a little academic stuff happening, so we do have a stretch of final exams coming up, so I'm gonna remind families at home that kids should still be cracking a book or reading something online between now and the end. We do have another CPAC meeting in June, I believe, before we close out the year. We have one more school committee meeting before we close out the year. And then the high school, ooh, no, who's marching? The RES band is marching in the Memorial Day Parade, right? I think are all bands, high school too? So the whole band program is coming together for the Memorial Day Parade as well, so one more chance to see our performance. But as Lawson said, a lot of, like, celebratory, good feelings and culminating activities happening, so we're really proud of the work, and it's been, you know, a tough year when it comes to things like budget, and things like staffing, and things like moving students forward, but I think when we get to the end of the year like this, Lawson, I agree with you, it feels like the hard work is worth it, and when I see you guys kind of walk across that stage of graduation, yeah, it's very emotional for all of us who worked with you guys. So thank you for coming in today, and thank you to everybody who's supporting our students.
I think you gave a lovely report. I also, we don't always hear about sixth and eighth grade transitions, so I think I really appreciate that information and that update, that acknowledgement that kids are coming behind. We really value the updates that we get from students, and so when you go back and you see Henry, just tell him we really look forward to whoever he sends our way next year. It's very important for us to have a student at the table. Yeah. Lawson, good luck to you. Do you want to share with us what your plans are?
So I will be attending college, just not next year. I'm taking a gap year, and planning on doing some internships, doing some work, but I really wanted to travel, so I will be doing some, traveling throughout the US this summer, as like, separate thing, traveling with some friends. But then, my main event is I will be traveling with a gap year program called Where There Be Dragons, they're based out of Boulder, Colorado, and I'm gonna be going to Nepal for three months on a cultural immersive program where you, you kind of, it's kind of ties into this because I do care so much about learning about public policy, that's what I want to go into college for. So you go, the part of this program is you travel to a country that's not so, like, it's not like regularly traveled to, it's kind of unique, and you stay with a homestay family, you learn about the culture, that's like the biggest part of it, especially with Nepal, there's such deep culture rooted in the religion of the Himalayas, like, throughout those cultures. So you go and you can learn about the government, you can learn about, you can learn the language, and we're gonna be doing some trekking, and I'm just really excited for that, because that was a big part of what I want to do. But then I will be coming home and spending some of my year doing some internships with some, like, a government position, I'm working with someone on the, who's a lobbyist for the Audubon Society, so she actually goes into the state building and negotiates policies with our, like, legislative branch, and it's pretty cool, so I'm excited about that. I'm hoping to actually do some work, I don't know, but yeah, I'm excited. Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, that's great, wonderful. Do we have anything else before we, Lawson, be free, if she wants to be? You are more than welcome to stay, but if you have other things to do this evening, we understand if you're gonna slip out. All right, thank you so much. Our next order of business is new business, and we're going to begin with an update on our internship program, and I think our internship program coordinator, Eric Vent, is coming to talk with us, as well as Principal Rose. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you very much for having me back. Well, I was here about, in December, I believe, to kind of introduce the program and what had, the work that had been done up to that point, and it feels like it was probably just two months ago, and here we are, end of May, and the internships are wrapping up this week, and I was very pleased with what happened this year, and I was very pleased with the results, especially, as you see the numbers there, forty-one graduating seniors, thirty-seven of them participated in an internship or a special project in some way, which I think was a great success for the first year of this model. The benchmark was thirty hours a week, and, but less that by five hours per other commitment, if it be in AP course or something of that nature. So I ran the numbers, which, you know, I tend to do as a math teacher, and saw that, you know, students were doing about twenty-five hours a week, as you spread it all out, which I thought was, you know, also a good number to hit there. And the projects that students did and the internships that they undertook and places that they worked were a pretty wide variety. You see a list of some of them right there. And, yeah, so it wasn't without its hiccups, as was expected, and, but it's been a great year of learning of how the program can run, and as I said, you know, the results were wonderful, to echo what Lawson shared about the internship fair yesterday. It was just so exciting to see the pride in the faces of each and every student who did something, showing, hey, this is what I did, this is what I made, this is what I learned, this is what I worked on. This is what I learned about myself, you know, some of them, and it was just, was overwhelming at times, as to see all the, you know, different responses and all positive responses that the students had. I'm assuming you don't want to hear too much from me, because you do have students here who are wanting to share. I don't have any questions to have of me before we turn it over to students.
I was gonna ask you a question, either now or later, if you could maybe just mention, like, what was one of the biggest challenges, you know, with this program undertaking, and then was there one really surprise that stood out to you, that you were, you know, really positive surprise that you weren't expecting?
So challenges were figuring out really the best timeline for all the different steps in preparation. I had an idea of what might work and saw that, okay, we need to actually do a couple other steps here, so that caused it to feel a little rushed at the last, you know, couple of weeks leading into it. That won't be the same next year, hopefully, so certainly that was something, you know, details and dates that I feel like are getting ironed out. In addition to that, just keeping the steady communication with the students, and, you know, building a culture where email is a form of communication between teachers and students, and I don't know if anyone could talk to that, but that was another challenge, you know, where, you know, it wasn't quite to the level that I was assuming that it might be, so this is something to, you know, to rethink, and say, okay, how can we best, you know, do this so that everyone's on the same page, everyone knows what's going on, everyone's comfortable with what expectations are, things of that nature. In terms of surprise, it really was, you know, not that I didn't expect it, but, you know, as I mentioned before, just seeing the level of satisfaction with all the students with what they did. And as I was walking towards the gym yesterday morning, and I had this sudden fear, like, I don't know if anyone's gonna show up, you know, and I walk into the gym, and there were six or seven seniors already there, about a half an hour before we're supposed to begin, and then they all started coming in and filling in, and it was just like, you know, sent a relief on my hand, but also, you know, just, you know, it was pleasant surprises how invested the students got into, you know, doing this kind of work, and anecdotally, some of them saying, you know, I was done with school, you know, and I love moving around and doing things, and I feel like I'm still learning stuff, and, you know, just, you know, being able to give the students that opportunity is, I think, a great move for this district, for the, our, you know, broader perspective of the experiences that we're trying to offer our students. Thank you.
All right, so I don't know if you want to come up one by one, or come holding hands, or whatever. So we have Lawson Nando wanted to, you know, came to speak, and we have Madison Slyer and Adriana Legidice.
Thank you for giving up an evening, you know, when you were probably pretty close to check out at this point, so we really do appreciate this, and just make sure you press that button when you want to talk, get in front of the mic, and share what you want to share with us.
Hello, I'm Madison Slyer, thank you for having me here tonight. My internship was at Addison Gilbert Rehabilitation Center at Addison Gilbert in Gloucester, and it was a very eye-opening experience for me. I knew when I saw my mom working there as a PTA, this is what I wanted to do, and I've had my heart set on that for a pretty long time now, but actually being there and being interacting and hands-on with the patients was a completely new experience. I'm so incredibly grateful that I even got this experience, because talking with some of the therapists who even graduated from Rockport said, oh, I didn't get to do this when I was in school. And being able to just dip my toes in the water a little bit of what I do want to do as a profession is such a great thing to me, because I don't want to go to school and find out I don't like this. And I just fell more in love with it the more I did it. Mr. Vent did touch on, I emailed him a lot, multiple times a day. I said, sorry, here's another email, for the first two weeks of the internship. And then I got in my groove, and I felt important, I felt like an adult, I had responsibilities. I wasn't really expected of anything, I can't touch the patients, but I helped clean, I felt like a good, active member of Addison Gilbert. And they, the therapists there are so, so smart. My favorite was to see the vestibular, so vertigo, that, I could sit and watch that all day. But it really did, every day I got there, and I thought, wow, I can't go, I can't wait to go to college and learn how to do this, and be a PT, and take patients of my own. I'm really, it makes me even more excited to get there, a little more sad because I can't believe I'm wishing to get there sooner. But this internship was really just, this is exactly what I needed, good way to end school early and get out of the classroom, but I continued learning every single day, and I still, in the last week, am learning new things every day and building connections with patients. They now say they're gonna miss me, I showed them prom pictures. It really is a little community there, and I'm so grateful that I got to go and experience it, and hopefully I get to work there someday, but I'm thankful for Rockport for giving me that opportunity in the first place.
Hi, I'm Adriana Legidice. I worked at a skincare company called Nira, and they work primarily making, like, laser skincare that you can use at home, and they have two offices, but right now they're doing a clinical study in Beverly, which is what I helped out with. Same thing as Madison said, just the experience and being able to, obviously, these people that work there, they're very intelligent people, and at first, I think they were a little skeptical, like a teenager coming in, what can we have her do so she won't mess up the data? But over a while, they realized that they could give me a little bit more, and I got to sit in with some patients, obviously, if they were okay with it, and just see, they would come in every four weeks after treatment to see the difference, and if there was any improvement, and I got to sit in and see them take pictures, it's like this really scary machine, but I promise it didn't hurt them or anything. But, so I just got to talk to them, and I got to see patients multiple times, and same thing, just like gaining a connection with people outside of school, and outside of teachers, and just learning from different mentors, even patients, obviously, they're just people that signed up for this, so even their jobs are influential to me, so talking to them about what I want to do and gaining that from them as well. But yeah, it was a really, it was really fun, and I wasn't expecting it, because I think going into it, it was a struggle to find an internship that I wanted to do based around my AP classes, because I had a couple, but, so I think going into it, I wasn't totally sure, or I wasn't embracing the full experience, but I tried to make the best of it, and I'm glad I did, because it was, it was really fun, so, yeah.
Okay, so going into the internship program, I like, I had a couple of things I was thinking of, but I, if it makes sense, I didn't really want to leave school yet, I just didn't want to be in classes, so I wanted to, I wanted to be at school because I kind of, like, my friends and I kind of thought that it's the, it's the last quarter of senior year, and to us, it's kind of felt like the most fun, so I was like, why would I leave? So I kind of wanted to do an internship in the school, and getting to know Ms. Rose, like, over all of high school, and it's been super, like, it's just been a joy knowing her, so I was like, oh my God, I should totally see if I should do, if I could do an internship with her, if she would let me. And she ended up allowing that, and so we, I was her formal intern, but kind of more her intern for... And she ended up allowing that. And so we, I was her formal intern, but kind of more her intern, intern for like student, like leadership groups. I kind of, I kind of managed student leaders. I, I met with some eighth graders. I went, I visit, I went to all the assemblies and I kind of just want to get a deeper understanding of how, how Ms. Rose worked to increase student engagement throughout Rockport. Because one of the things that I kind of, one of the questions or just something that I noticed throughout high school is that kids, kids kind of shy away from speaking out a lot of the time. There's just not as much of that anymore. I've kind of seen like a downfall and people in our grade are kind of shy sometimes, including myself. And I just kind of wanted to see how I could understand how to kind of touch kids more in the, in the sense of like to make them into leaders more. So I worked with Ms. Rose. We met, I met with some eighth graders, talked to, asked them about how their high school experience was and how it could be improved. And we kind of worked on making this initiative for the school called the Project Live Life Large Initiative, which is part of kind of my brand. And it's all kind of about, kind of using, like to the best of your ability, using the opportunities that you have throughout Rockport. And there's so much opportunity you have because Ms. Rose and all the staff is so accommodating. And basically just kind of using your voice in more of a way to kind of make the school, make your school experience what you want it to be, kind of making kids realize that if you don't see something that you think you need in, in school, that you can make that, whether it be a club or a connection to somebody. Or I just kind of wanted to see what it would be like to kind of take my brand to the school. So we made the mentorship program, which is like that assembly that I'm talking about, where we actually use the merging of the middle and high school to our advantage in having high schoolers take on more of a leadership position, teaching younger kids or just giving them a person to talk to, kind of make use of the merge. And then also next year, with the assemblies that Ms. Rose puts on every Tuesday for the, well, that's for the high school and then the middle school is like Wednesday, I think. But having, having students be in charge of that, so more of an assembly committee to have more student involvement, increase that student involvement. So that's, those are two things that we, that were part of my initiative that we want to reinstate next year. So that was kind of my goal is to find some way to, to get kids to speak up more, feel like they have more power in this, like in the, in the school. But yeah, I had a great time. There were definitely weeks where I was really busy, like multiple, multiple meetings. I kind of just thought to myself, all right, I just need to power through this week because when you take on a leadership position, it's, it's a lot of work as you guys understand. So I, I definitely feel honored to have that experience because it does help me know about, know more about what I want to do in the future. So yeah, it was an honor to work with Ms. Rose. She's a, she's an angel, so it was really fun. I had a great time.
So fantastic to hear from you all. So we're gonna let the committee ask you a few questions.
What questions or comments do we have? Pause, take your time. I was wondering, because you're kind of the first, we have had internships before, but you're really the first class to kind of kick off this bigger internship program. What advice or what would you say to juniors who are going to be having this experience next year? What have you kind of learned from your experience and what would you tell them?
Something I've learned and I definitely had to address to was time management. I didn't do that very well at all my first three years of high school and pretty much halfway into my senior year. And with having my internship, I've definitely learned a lot of that. Coming up with my own schedule, I've never had to do. It's always been school, seven thirty-five to two-ten and going off of that. So making my own schedule, it was very fun. I was like, oh, eight to two, perfect. I still wake up early, but I have more time to get there. And then I had to think about my after-school activities. I dance at a local studio. I have dance Monday through Thursday. And I was like, well, I have to think about that too. And then I have to think about all of my senior things. We have our banquet coming up. We have our, we had our showcase. And I was just thinking, I was like, wow, I'm really glad I'm not in any AP classes. Kudos to you, Adriana, because I don't think I'd be able to do that on top of this. There were weeks where I was down in the dumps. I was not, I wanted, I was like, I just want to take a sick day. I don't want to be, I, I need a break. But I was like, no, this is what adulting is and you have to manage your time, figure it out. And so I forced myself to figure it out and I made time, I made sure I made time for myself. I made time for all of my things that I love. And I made time for my internship because that's what it was. It was work. And I made sure I knew it was work, like this is your, a preview to your adult life. You need to figure it out. There's no option of quitting. So I think that would be like time managing and just like taking it week by week and figuring it out because it's not always the same.
I would say for juniors, go into it with an open mind. Because like I said, knowing that I had to find something that would work around my AP classes, I went into it kind of thinking like, well, this isn't really what I wanted to do. I'm just, I just have to do it because everyone else is doing it and I don't want to be the only one at school. But as I got there, I just realized I was keeping myself from fully gaining from the experience. And as a couple of weeks went by, I kept going in more, making more connections. And I ended up learning a lot more than I thought I would. So definitely just keeping an open mind going into it.
I kind of want to give like some, like a piece of advice that's like a mix of, like work hard, but also do something fun. Like take it seriously and do all your hours. Don't slack off, but do something that you'll enjoy. Something that, it doesn't necessarily have to be what you're going into. Like there, there were moments during my internship where I just, like I, I thought I was like, oh, my God, I should have just done like something like that wasn't as difficult, but, but I still had a lot of fun. I'm just saying like, I don't know. There's, there's an expectation, but you can have fun with it and you have time to plan what you want to do. So I would just say to take time, plan. Also, I mean, the planning, like, like what people were saying about the two weeks leading up to before the internship, like that is not cram time. Like I'd be thinking about it or just think of your options, make like, reach out to people. Because there is time to plan for it. And if it's the whole last quarter of your, of your time at high school, it's, it's like worth thinking about, making sure you're spending that time wisely. So I would just say like planning, have fun with it though, but, but like, like do your hours and stay committed.
I was just gonna say that's very insightful answers from all three of you and good advice, I think, for anybody at any age and in any job. So really, really nice to hear. Thank you guys for coming out tonight.
I just want to say congratulations. You've basically made it. You're very close. You're there. And thank you for sharing your stories with us. They were all three very different stories, three very insightful stories. So thank you.
I want to say thank you for teaching me a new word, a geron, adulting. Maybe other people know that word, but that's a great word. I'm gonna think about that. The other thing that I was thinking is what incredible ambassadors our students are out in the community. When you go out every day and you meet patients or you work with clients or you work with other students who are younger, people see you and they see us, they see Rockport Public Schools. And I am sure with thirty-seven people out in the community that the, the, what people have to take away from this is what wonderful kids, what wonderful students, what a wonderful school system. And then there's something bigger, which is kids in America are good. They're smart, they're kind, and they care. And when you all go out and do this and the community sees that, it's a good thing. It gives people that reminder that students are great and you're the future. So I would imagine that your patients, your clients and your sixth graders, they loved having you come and do these things. And so as much as I think you got out of this, my guess is that other people got things out of it and that the system gets something very positive. There's this glow that happens when something is really successful. So it sounds like you each had a great experience and I suspect there's some really positive wins all the way around. So I just really appreciate the work that goes into this from the staff, from the teachers who adjust their teaching schedule at the end of the semester, from the administration and from the community that makes these opportunities available. It sounds like you did a great job leading the way. Thank you. All right, I believe our next presentation is a Special Ed Parent Advisory Committee update. With us is Anne Marie Luster, who's the Director of Student Services, and our CPAC President, Mr. Dan McLaughlin. So thanks for joining us.
Yes, it was.
So good evening. Anne Marie Luster, Director of Student Services.
I'm Dan McLaughlin, recently elected President of the CPAC Group.
And I'm really not going to do much of the talking for a change. I'm gonna turn it over to Dan.
Thank you. I'm gonna, I apologize. I'm gonna read over my notes and then if you have questions, I'm happy to try and expand. CPAC is Special Education Parent Advisory Council. It's a group of district parents of children on IEPs and 504s and other interested parties. What we do is we help advise the school committee on the needs of the special education community. We meet regularly with school officials and we work on cooperating with the district on annual workshops. During the year, we've been increasing disability awareness in the community, providing a space for parents and staff to share ideas, identify concerns and support families of children with special needs, mostly at our monthly meetings. Mrs. Luster and Mrs. Keating got CPAC started this year. They had our first meeting in November and they've continued to help support and guide us through this year. At the November meeting, we met on Zoom. Ms. Luster shared with a group of us, interested parents, what CPAC was and how parents could be involved in the group. Parents also shared what they were looking for from CPAC. From December's meeting, they had already organized for the Federation of Children to come and discuss basic rights. For the rest of the year, we have met once a month. We met on Zoom for a few months and now we meet in person once a month in the Rockport Elementary School Library. We started using the last fifteen minutes of our meetings for a safe space for parents to discuss some of the issues that may come up and that they need to bounce them off another parent who has gone through and understands what it is to have a child in special education. Some of the highlights for this year include, we have a new logo. I don't think it's up there. And we were working on a newsletter. We were also using Blackboard, Smores and a Facebook page to share group news and also resources in, resources and education programs that are directed towards the needs of our community. The newsletter, In the Loop, we were in it when it first came out. And one of the highlights, somebody from the community saw it and showed up at one of our meetings. Dr. Hastings, a pediatric ophthalmologist, came to our March meeting after seeing us in the community newsletter. She explained to us what she did for a living and shared her willingness to possibly be a speaker at a future workshop or meeting. Some of the other things we've done to sort of bring what we do into the community. March twenty-first was Down Syndrome Day. The Rockport school staff wore colorful socks to recognize this day. An apparent ran story time for some classes, reading books about Down Syndrome that went over really well with everyone. One of the big things we've talked about is the inclusion part and how to just get everyone included in everything. Also at the March meeting, which was big for us, was we signed our bylaws to sort of make us an official group and direct us in how to run that group. We've looked at different ways our community could also participate in non-classroom settings. There's a chess program currently going on now at the Rockport High School Middle School with hopes that we can get some of them to help mentor and teach chess into this, our community. We also have been looking for adaptive sports options and we found some. And one of the stories that was shared with us is that one child did participate in a winter basketball camp up at the high school over this last year with some support from the coach that was running it. I'm gonna just say it again. We recently had elections for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year for CPAC. I was elected president and Bethany Beers was elected secretary, who was sitting in the back. Next year, we plan to meet every third Thursday of the month. These meetings will be a mix of formal and social meetings with an agenda and topics of interest for caregivers to discuss at the end of the meetings. A big discussion we had this year is how to increase our group size. Twenty-six percent of the student population is special education. Our group is made up of about seven people that consistently come to meetings. Besides continuing to support the special education population, caregivers and staff next year, we also hope to raise our membership numbers through different forms of outreach in order to see what the needs are of our special education community. Thank you.
I think we really appreciate your service and your organization and I wonder if we have any questions or comments.
I have a student on an IEP. He's been with the system for five years now. And in that five years, they've been trying to get a CPAC up and running. So I just want to say bravo to everyone who is involved and thank you for getting this started and taking the lead because it's really important. So thank you for doing the hard work.
I kind of wanted to echo what Jess said. We're really happy to see a CPAC up and running and we hope to hear from you and, you know, work with you. And I wonder if, if other CPACs in the area like work together to bring speakers and things? Is that a thing? Like Manchester, Essex, Gloucester, whoever? I don't know if they do that or we haven't really had the opportunity to do that, but.
Yes, it is. Every school district by law is supposed to have a CPAC group. So there are numerous CPAC groups in the area. We haven't, I don't think, directly reached out to them, but we have explored through the internet their web pages to see what direction they sort of go in, see what sort of workshop seminars they sort of try to bring in. I think we have been passed on some of that information to invite members from our community to go join their things. But I will also turn it over to Mrs. Luster.
Yeah, that was one of the suggestions from Jen Jefrida back there. She, we did reach out to Gloucester earlier in the year and there was a lot going on there as we know. Their CPAC president had stepped down, the vice president, there were negotiations going on. So we were never really connected, but I think that that it would be an excellent resource, especially where we're so small. And I, I think one of the things that was really surprising was the parents need to just have somebody else that they can relate to and talk through concerns or things that are just going on, just challenges. And I, I think if people understood that, you know, that they would receive that support in a, in a safe place, then maybe the numbers would be different. It's not a typical meeting where you're expected to do certain things. It's really meant for parents to have a support group and to be able to talk through things. So for me, that was the real surprise. And then it was, it was evident that that was one of the bigger needs. And so that's going to be a major focus of next year, just really explaining to people that we're not asking you to fundraise. We're not, we're not asking you to do those things. We want to provide you with training and with supports and, you know, resources and to have someone else to either commiserate with or, or celebrate your wins or whatever it is. But that you have that group of people because I think sometimes it can be a lonely place to be.
I'm wondering, Dan, you mentioned that at one of your first meeting, parents and members shared what it was that they were looking from the group, from joining. Would, would you be able to, to say what you were looking for joining and did you find that in the group or how, how did that go?
So I will sort of repeat, but I, five years ago or so, there wasn't really anything going on. So I was happily surprised when I saw an email and there was a group getting started. Mrs. Luster and Mrs. Keating have been phenomenal getting that going and keeping us going and helping us throughout the way. I think as a parent, I really was showing up there for like camaraderie, you know? Where do I fit in? Where does my child fit in? And where do we sort of go from there? Other parents expressed similar things, but also you know, how do we guide through the process of special education? I don't want to share too many personal stories or anything. But you know, some of the simple questions are, where do I even begin? I think my child needs an IEP or a 504. And not everybody knows, you know, you just ask, you know, and we'll take it from there and see where it goes. Like people do just need that comfort and hearing somebody say, you know, follow me, I'll show you what we do. And if you like it, stick with us. So there was that. And then also just the whole inclusion thing has been a strong part of my background for many years. Uh, not just here, not just at other schools, but at jobs and et cetera. So that was sort of one of the things that kept me in this group was seeing that, you know, that's sort of one of the bonds we all have is we're trying to find where we fit in so that we can also help our kids fit in. But at the same time, helping everyone else fit into one big giant group because we all want to be Rockport Public Schools and do the best we can.
Anything else? We really appreciate your coming out to share with us and the work that's gone into creating the committee. And we look forward to hearing back from you um, soon, next year. Thank you so much. Great to have you with us. Thank you. Yeah. Um, I think it's time for Ms. Goodhue to join us. We're going to talk about the updated RTA contract. Appendix A.
So you do have this.
Appenda two.
Yeah, appenda two.
It's an appenda.
I, I don't know.
Wow.
Appendix two and appendix. Wow.
I had never seen it before.
Welcome.
So um, this is a continuation of the update from the last meeting where we had had two um, subcommittees working collaboratively on some of the uh, extension work in the appendices. So um, Jody will just kind of talk us through this one. And before um, she steps up to the mic there, I just think, I, I want to make sure we publicly talk about the relationship again. Partnership between the RTA, the leadership team. You know, this really is an extension, so to speak, of negotiations and those of us who were involved in negotiations worked really hard to kind of button things up um, in a timely manner and in an appropriate manner last year. And kudos to the members of those teams who decided that what they didn't want to do is have the process halt because we had a few more categories to, to, to kind of tighten up. So um, thank you to Jody and the leadership team and all of the RTA members for um, you know, kind of finishing this process out for us and then tell us what it all means.
Um, so this one was um, a heavier lift, which we knew getting into it, but it was even heavier than we thought. If you look at the old RTA stipend list, it was grouped by building and by district and then they were alphabetical in sections. So all of the money was just, there was no rhyme or reason to how much each um, position was worth. And there was no explanation as to what the responsibilities or expectations of those roles were. So um, we took that, the other piece of that is we didn't know what was funded, what we could fund, what was half funded and what we could post every year for um, staff members to fill. So we started out, we used a model that Dr. Branko um, advised us to use and we created the tiers. And so we put things in buckets by first defining what the expectations of each role were. And um, this, we just finished this committee up on May first because we were going back and forth on a few little figures here or there. The RTA members of this group really stepped up. They went out and they spoke to every single person who held one of these roles to find out how many hours they did, how many kids they had in their groups, what they thought about the amount of money they made. So they were really instrumental in helping us figure out what went where here. So we did, we did have the opportunity to come up with four tiers with four being the biggest responsibility and one being the least. And then the district wide stipends that don't fit into those categories. Um, we worked with Dr. Branko on the performing arts, figuring out how to support those roles. Historically, the middle school raised enough money through receipts to fund everything they needed to fund, but the high school did not. And the high school paid a lot more money for the rights to shows. So what we've done now, everything that we are fun, he, we have here will be funded through the school budget instead of through receipts. So those receipts can go into student activities and help them perform going forward. And then finally athletics has a separate set of four tiers. So we did move around um, a few things, but for the most part, everything is the same money or a little bit more. And that's um, over what was budgeted for next year. Only five of these roles were reduced in funding and that was based on discussion out of the committee and how much work was being done and comparatively speaking to other roles that were happening. And um, so overall forty three remain stable, sixty three have a, an increase which could be very, very minimal. Uh, eighty six dollars to some that really needed an increase. Mrs. Rose and Ms. Luster were on this committee with me. And Amy Rose had a lot of insight into what some of these roles did at a high school level. So we were able to shift some money to those areas. So I know what you had asked um, coming into this was, was there a cost? And there is a cost. The cost is twenty nine thousand fifty one dollars in um, added costs of the budget if we post and fill every single one of these positions. Um, and then we also did increase the curriculum coordinators a little bit, given that shift in their roles to six twelve. And looking at them comparatively to what a tier four was, it was a little bit more work, so worth a little bit more money. So they got another two percent on top, not huge, but just a little bit more to put that role where it should be. So the savings, the budgetary savings that was in the budget of thirty six thousand has been reduced to thirty four. I can't see thirty four thousand five hundred thirty. So it's not that much um, of a difference, but we did um, take some, take that into consideration as well. So we now have a clearly defined way of, you know, knowing who is expected to do what, what they're going to be paid for that role. And I think one of the best parts about this is we added um, language in here that the principals are able to create new clubs based on student interest, staff interest and needs and fit it into the right tier and just create that and fund that if we have the funding to do that. The RTA did um, already ratify this. It was ninety percent um, in favor. So it is ratified. They are all good to go from there. So the next step is for you to ratify that unless you have any other questions for me about it.
I have two questions. Am I correct that this becomes essentially a salary schedule that's part of our contract? And that in coming years, the increases that apply to the salary schedules also apply to the activity sponsor stipends?
For this.
Whatever we call this.
Yep. For this round, it does. So that this um, document, document will be MOA'd into the current contract to replace what's there for the next two years. So those raises that were already built in are what will be here. Um, and those were calculated into the figures I just gave you.
Yes. Once these are set, like the regular step and level chart, this chart.
For the ten year, for the life of the current contract.
For the life of the contract. It's treated the same way.
Yes. Next time you negotiate, sometimes the raise goes to stipends and it doesn't some. So that all depends on what comes out of the next round of negotiations.
Thank you. Great. Are there other questions or comments?
I have a question and it might just be silly to be honest, but what makes a winter sport a tier four compared to other sports?
It's about the number of games, the number of practices, the number of weeks. Um, it's also based on interest and how many teams we need to run. So this was worked on with um, the athletic director. He met with Mark and I, he met with me, he met with Mrs. Rose. He gave us input into building this schedule.
We also did a full analysis of the North Shore. So we looked at every single coaching stipend from every high school that we could get it from on the North Shore just to do our comps to make sure that we're remaining competitive. And in some places we weren't, you know, historically, and in some places we were actually up above the average. Um, and we were kind of setting the, the market. Um, so that's where you'll hear some adjustments along the way. But in general, it's, it's really length of season, number of kids, games, that kind of stuff. And we've said publicly a couple of times when it comes to athletics and even, and even stuff like DECA and theater programming now. We don't budget for success, right? So when teams win, now you're coaching two or three more games. When the, when the play goes on to the states or the regionals, you know, now they have another performance and that's uh, more, more work for the adults, more work for the kids and the families, uh, more transportation costs. So those are things that, you know, we have a strong school district that puts our kids out there and our programs out there successfully. But um, you know, from a budgetary standpoint, we don't budget for success and um, that doesn't get reflected on this kind of work.
Yeah. And if you know, all the other tiers for athletics cover all the different seasons. It was just that one that fell into tier four. And two things that I know might be of note to you are the running club stipend was increased so that Erin can support that with splitting that stipend with additional staff or she has more money to run that. And juggling club is now a stipend, which has never been a paid position before either. Um, the elementary schools still will run their before and after school programs from a separate um, line item. They do work through student activities, so it doesn't come out of this piece. So there are a lot more clubs and activities at the elementary school that aren't noted in the contract.
So I have a question. I may have missed this because it might have been in the meeting before. But so what did you do for FY twenty five? Was that a market adjustment or did you? Was it, was it the same call of the four point two, four point twenty five percent?
They had a contract that they had already negotiated.
Yeah.
So I don't remember what their increase was.
Okay, so, because I was assuming it was like the three year contract. So I was assuming this is the last.
Yeah, this is the second two years of the three year. I don't remember what the increase was last year.
Okay.
I don't really, this is our first year of the new one, right?
Right. Was it three and a half this year? So it was three and a half over the previous year.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I am looking for a motion to approve um, the updated RTA contract. Appendix A.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Goodhue. Thank you for the work that went into that. All right. Thank you all. Have a nice evening. Thank you for coming tonight. We so appreciate it. All right. The last part of our new business is a review and approval of the twenty five, twenty six school committee meeting calendar. Dr. Branko, that's you.
So Madam Chair, what I've done is I just took a look at our calendar um, that you had approved back in March. Plugged in our every other Wednesday dates. I have put in a placeholder for an August twelfth summer retreat. Unless you've booked a massive vacation ahead of time, tell me, we can move that. But if you don't mind checking that date now um, or soon, not, not this very second, but soon. Sorry. And just let me know if that will work for all five of you, um, then I will be able to um, put together um, with Ms. Keating a location and a plan for our retreat. I did uh, proactively this time. I've learned from my past years apparently. I did proactively look at MASC, MasQ and some of the other reasons that we've either moved meetings in the past. So I've looked at all those organizations to find out when they're holding their events. So that's why you will either see no meeting or every now and then you'll see two back to back or a third week in the middle. Um, but this should provide us um, with enough meetings and some flexibility and not force us to reschedule too many times.
And just so that we're all on the same page, that um, August day is an offsite day long uh, workshop format. It is technically an open meeting, but it is a time for us to be together. Last year, we had an excellent facilitator. Perhaps we'd like that um, person to come back. But just to make sure that um, everyone understands what that day is. So. Do we uh, take a vote on and approve this? Are there any comments or questions or suggestions about what you see? Nope. All right. Hearing none, um, I'd like um, a motion to approve the twenty five, twenty six school committee meeting calendar as proposed by the superintendent.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. That concludes our new business. We're going to go back up the agenda where we left off. And that brings us to correspondence. Do we have any? Thank you. Donations.
We do. So on your slide, we'd just like to thank um, fundraiser from Rusty and Ingrid Screenprints. They had sent, done some hand printed donations for us. We'd like to thank um, for donation of one black tree of life sweatshirt for the music department fundraiser from Solstice. And Tom Flaherty for donating musical equipment, miscellaneous stands, cables, handheld percussion instruments to the music department. And again, I say this, I think every single time I put this slide up, but um, it needs to be said that you know, in thirty year career in six different school districts, I've never been part of a place where uh, the superintendent gets to present this many donations and philanthropic support. So a thank you to the community um, for showing us how much you support our school district.
That's great. Do we need to make um, uh, we need to vote on this, correct?
You do.
All right. I would um, be looking for a motion to accept these donations as presented by the superintendent. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right. Our next item is personnel.
None at this time.
All right. Subcommittee updates. All right. Uh, unfinished business. We. Wow. And we do not have a finance presentation tonight. Wow. That brings us to our school committee discussion. The moment we've all been waiting for. Is there anything we need to discuss?
Just want to clarify, we have graduation coming up next Friday, is it?
Let's talk about what time to arrive and how we are sure everybody has a cap and gown.
I believe.
I'm sure we do.
Amanda is nodding at us. So if, has everybody been taken care of? Yes.
Right.
And uh, what time are we arriving?
I'm sure we'll get an email that tells us exactly what time to arrive.
Yep.
I'm sure. And uh, we uh, gathered together in the senior cafe and straightened out our caps and gowns and off we go. Okay. So that's a good item of business. Are there any other odds and ends? No? All right. Do we have a need for executive session?
Do not.
All right. I would um, love to have a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. This concludes our meeting.